Got it.
Uh. Ordinance on for uh four twenty-three and we got the trash ordinance out late. So we need to add that to the agenda five twenty-three on um when we go into council. So we'll need to add. When it's five twenty-three.
Do you have it there? Cause that's why I was.
Amy has it. Yeah.
Or are you gonna do three readings with that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, that's what we said we're put it on and do three readings, that's why we have it on.
And the marches.
Yeah.
But then the march one.
We will be our billing part of your agenda February, that still gives you time for the reading.
Yeah.
And we're passing for an emergency tonight, four twenty-three?
No.
No, it's going through readings.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Those are all. Have any other ordinances coming up?
I will for um next week um two appropriations. One, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for house trailer to um the line items just entitled house trailer. Um along with that, I will have a transfer eighteen hundred and fifty dollars from the house trailer state fees to house trailer salary. House trailer, that fund was money that we would receive in nine hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. And that went along with the sanitarians um trailer inspections that they did. And typically you would never really notice, I would just let that build up since it was nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then use it towards his salary, sometimes he had state fees that he would have to remit. But um since there is um the little bit of cash setting there, I can go ahead and do that transfer into the salary line item. And appropriate the additional nine twenty-five, so I can spend that remaining salary. On the last portion of Joe's salary that we paid out, so we can get that used up because that was actually our revenue. Um from years twenty, twenty-one and um twenty-two, so that is ours to use. Um then one other um additional appropriation, it'll be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the water fund. And creating a new capital improvement line item, it'll just be water capital improvement meter project. It's with the large meter replacement project that Dave has that'll be ongoing for the next couple of years. So just to get it started, um I'm just adjusting the budget for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and go ahead and appropriate that. So he'll have some invoices coming in and out, there isn't a need to create a new fund. Everything will have its own separate identifying account numbers and set up for that. So if those could be go on the agenda next week and past, I would appreciate it.
Where are we at on the design loans, things that you talked about the last meeting?
Um my understanding like you may have got the EPA is gonna approve the one for the wastewater plan. Later meeting the twenty-sixth of this month, uh do some signings and some other issues. One for the Warsaw loan will not be approved till their February meeting. And I believe that all while on that topic mayor, the mayor forward, I believe the council that we do these one or two more council members. Mayor could meet.
Yeah, I talked to Tom about that, okay. Getting that done, like what is that, three hours, three hour training? Yeah.
Yeah. I gotta ask, I don't want these guys to get mad at me.
You want me to nominate someone?
No, I already have somebody. Actually, I get it, but I don't know if I count.
I doubt it, cause you're not a voting member.
Not a voting member, so it's just three hours of my life, I'll never get back.
I would, if you have that, if you've done this, I would probably ask.
I'll email him back, I got my. I got my.
Your name's highlighted as taking it on the list.
He's not even on the list.
Yeah, yeah. If you're.
Yeah.
If you're on the list.
I'll check in. I'll check, I'll check when you start giving the report, that way people will be looking at it.
Right.
He's on his phone.
Yeah. You're right. So uh so Tom, I guess if I don't um if I don't qualify, could you take that? Cause Michelle and Roger have done it.
I'm really sure what I'm talking about.
It's um.
Is that.
Are we up or we did the email?
Yeah, there's to give principal forgiveness, there's something in the EPA statutes that fifty percent of the board members have to trade. This all called financial management overview course. And it's requirement of getting the principal forgiveness on the design loan for Warsaw.
And it's about water, it's about water loss and.
Very interesting.
We have to do it, yeah, we have to, you know, because they take care of it, but I think since we're the voting members, you guys are the voting members, that's. Okay.
They verify one take it, that'd be fine, I mean.
Right.
This, I mean, so you had to do the next years.
Yeah, I think you have to take it every five years. Yeah, it's good for five years.
We'll handle it. Somebody else have any ordinances for the next meeting? Okay. Um housing and property maintenance, um don't forget about the zoning hearing on the thirty-first, right?
Yes, okay, that's next tomorrow, next week, right? Week.
Correct. Yeah.
Well, anyone uh, okay, anyone talk to that household about not operating until the zoning? I guarantee you they are.
We drove by the other day and there wasn't much going on.
I know there's four vehicles and a truck out there, so it looks like a lot going on to me.
I mean, we'll, we'll be going back on what we told you guys, that's what we're gonna do, that's fine, but.
Well.
It's like to keep the number of vehicles down. More would be terminal, just so you like.
It's still operating a business in a residential area and that, we might as well not have zoning. If we're not going to enforce, you know, that's what's frustrating. We have zoning, we have ordinances and, you know, I guess it depends on who you are or what you're doing, we don't enforce it. And it's frustrating for me, I don't know about anyone else sitting here, but.
We've only had two of those in the last almost six years, so.
I don't know, there's some area at times where that wouldn't even be considered. To have a business in a residential area.
Well, the thing with me, it's like four cars and a truck in the driveway, like if I go knock on the door and no one answers in the garage. How do I know they're running the business? Because we know they are because they come and asked.
Did they not? So, you know, we're either going to, we either need to enforce our ordinances and our zoning laws, or I don't know why we haven't. Next thing you know, there'll be a hole out somebody's front yard at a gentleman's club somewhere.
Oh, that kind of bull.
I know we talked about it last meeting and.
We had someone here talk asking about it.
Yeah.
Okay. So I've um Max said something to me when we were um when we did that visit the other day. As uh, sure, has anybody checked on all the employees at the the new place down here? Who's on the payroll at Standard Power? Max said something to me.
I was kind of feeling that guy, I don't see how many people that actually have worked.
W two's are due to be filed by the um the thirty-first associate.
Okay, alright. Okay. Infrastructure, Dave, you wanna give us an update on what else going on?
I will email it to, I've had it, it's kind of consolidating it. One of the big things, I got a vendor that's approved by like the. Or council cities for service line replacement and they want to kind of just tag on us, the city to acknowledge their program. It would be at no cost to the city itself, but they're advertising a insurance program for your water and sewer laterals. For a nominal fee, I think it's seven to ten dollars a month. And then that way, if your service lines would fail, they replace under their insurance policy. All they're really asking from us is to acknowledge the program. And uh then they would take care of that, so I'll be on that information to you the next day or so, so you can look at it, we'll talk more about next council member. But I think with a lot of freezing weather we've had and a lot of service lines that are broken on the water, I think it's a good program for the residents.
And we'll kind of believe the gas company has the same.
The gas company has a similar program. Plus one, um you know, we're, we're coming out of cooler weathers, like I said, we talked at last meeting, we've had a few water breaks, we've got some holes that we need to patch. Uh we can get L S M, it's scheduled tomorrow, we're working with the shock and materials, we've got like five holes that need some concrete in those to fill those up. Uh working with the auditor, you know, we've got first batch of meters coming in, you know, that'll start scaling up, so start getting more meters in. We're still going to thirty to forty a month, I'll have my regular report next meeting to give you a better idea.
You still in different wards with those? You, you do so many on a ward or, no wait, man, you told me you, you said you're doing the ones that didn't work first.
We're doing the ones that didn't work, actually, we're trying also when we find all count, let's say, you know, Chad here, so we sound, we try to get those, you know, because we're getting access to change the metered out. So we're going the opportune ones, uh we'll probably start hitting the pit meters uh hard, because that was some of the material we could get. And the pits, we don't really need access to the home, so we're kind of being more selective. And what we're trying to do long term is eliminate routes. Cause like the meter reader will do route A, which may take these streets here, we're gonna try to get as many of those in that route. And knock that route, so he doesn't have to go to that area anymore. But uh what we'll also concentrate on for the next month, so it is what we'll call the quarterly, we still have uh hundred and seventy-five, approximately hundred and eighty meters that are red quarter. So we want to get those off our list.
One other question.
Sure.
Does it leak, recur down on Dimon Hill? There's not a leak there.
We don't believe so, we've sampled that and it doesn't contain any chlorine, which is our user test, I'll get sample for fluoride. And it was about dried up this morning when I drove by it.
It is, yeah, some days it's running all the way down.
Yeah.
It's weird, I didn't know if it was just.
Yeah, well, I'll have the guys pull a sample.
Seeper or trickler?
Seeper.
That's a seeper, trickler, you can see it. But um we'll check it for fluorine, that's our final, you know, class A test, because the fluorine will not evaporate like the chlorine in other water. But it's been dried up a couple times when I went down the hill, so.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to tell.
Okay.
I was just, yesterday it looked wet.
Yeah. And as a water, if it is a, you know, underground water phenomenon, it's gonna take that path, release resistance, come right up there, that's.
Yeah.
So, yeah, other questions?
Double thing.
Okay.
Okay, mayor?
A couple of things going on, actually, speaking of standard power, Troy Congressman Ballerson was uh here last week. I don't know which day it was, but he was here last week at Standard Power, was spoke with him for a couple of different matters Tuesday. Okay, he was here Tuesday, the time flies when you're having fun. Had a visit here at Standard Power, took a tour of the facility, spoke with us for a little while. Uh this week I'm going to be meeting with Ohio Southeast about uh the potential for the state to help out. To extend water and sewer to Conesville, uh mainly the, the old A P site. Uh wanna welcome Mark Schrepp to the city hall tomorrow. It will be kind of earn as you learn program here at city hall, uh we will focus on property code. And I know Roger sent me a couple of locations that we'll be working on first. Uh and out of town property owners are a lot of our issue, I mean, if, if you look at it now, the majority of, of problems. Uh are probably over fifty percent out of town property owners, so makes it even more fun when they don't live here, they don't look at it and they really don't care. So we'll have to figure out a way to, just an investment, so uh we'll definitely be working on that. Trash contract, you said we've got, we've got the ordinance, so we just need to get that done and next, by the end of February. Quotes will be going out for uh summer mowing, the bridge area. And also we are going to property code, just subcontract that work through a, through a mowing company.
How will that work, because we can build a property.
Yeah, so when they go. And well, that doesn't mean, it depends on which process or where it's at, and if it's in the foreclosure process. Over fifty percent of the time, we're gonna get our money back on, because it'll just be put on as on the, on the taxes. So it, it will, we don't get our money back a hundred percent of the time, but most of the time we do and it just goes on the taxes. Water lines, they continue to work on the cemetery, uh they actually, the trencher that they were using broke, so they're fixing that. It should be fixed by the end of the week, hopefully we have a mild, mild temperatures like we've had. Uh and they get that done all this winter, so drainage, uh Hall Park. They, Public Works in conjunction with Parks and Rep work together to get uh the court area. There's actually a drain pipe that goes, not a huge drop off off the court. Oak Avenue, we're going to continue our, our project, North Tenth and Oak Avenue. Uh to do some drainage of Oak Avenue uh towards South Eleventh Street. And John Street, we did Public Works did a repair out there on an alley. And also catch basin, catch new catch basin in the alley in between Wilson and there on John. Right in the middle section there, uh just washed out, uh then the Lynn Street, there was one there that had needed them for several years and got fixed. Um and we had a Warsaw meeting, uh and I don't know, did I send you the project list? That Dave Kager I put together for all of our water and sir, I'll send that out to council.
Did you, did you, your last report, is that?
Yeah, but I think this one wasn't updated, wasn't.
I did you update your report last.
I'll send you an update of the height of. Yeah, water and wastewater, uh all the upgrades, there are all the projects we potentially do. Max has a email out for goals for department heads, we have sewage and we have uh, we have Dave's list of all the projects there. And we're waiting on a couple more, so. That's all I have, if anyone has questions, I'll answer.
Mark, any word on reopening Fourth Street?
Uh should be closed, I haven't talked to them in a couple of weeks, so I'll go down and talk to them.
Get some questions on.
Yeah, see what uh they, really, they were waiting to get that front down and the front looks pretty much tied.
There's not a lot in the street anymore.
There's not, yeah, and that's what they were just waiting on the front end to get, get that finished up. So uh I think what we will allow them to do is to keep the parking spots. The fence right on the parking spot, so we can maintain two-way traffic, but just have this parking, have the fence out, that way they have a little room if they need to get out. And I think it's worked, couple of days they've had the man left, uh they brought the fence out a little bit, like onto the street, but nothing that requires it to be closed. So I'll talk to him this week and see where they're at with it.
Where was that address, I don't even know, you read me today?
Eleven oh three Lynn Street, Dave responded, but.
Did they, did you respond to the, to the resident?
I responded to Roger.
I responded to the resident that it about when the water was shut off, etcetera, but that didn't satisfy him.
Uh Roger, we even went back, I checked the file a little more in depth, uh a month or two ago to make sure the meter still wasn't running, that he was bypassing. That meter showed no usage. I know that was one of the ones that uh Jeff was falling off on, because he could never catch him home. You know, once we shut the water off, it's considered uninhabitable and then he could never, we could never catch anybody there, a few times I went by, I've never caught anybody there to let anybody know.
Now, I just, you read the email, I think, I just forwarded to you two just a second ago. Same gentleman, now they're stealing from the city and we're not doing anything about it, and there's, there's a child there.
Makes accusations, it's not true about city employees.
Yeah, so I, I also called children's services and made a referral that somebody's claiming there's a child being raised in a home with no water, no sewer. I don't know what else the guy wants us to do, but obviously we're not doing our job, so he needs run for council.
Yeah. I, I mean, it, it becomes one of those things that I just tried to explain with war, having a garage, like there are points where you can't kick the door in. And say like, we know you have no water, like it, you know, we, there's, there's limits to the law.
I made a referral to children's services, so I understand that's it, which is something that probably should have been done.
Right.
By another avenue. Thanks for your response on that, Dave.
Um. Any projects for the uh city, Mark, that you can let us in on?
I mean, it's, they're going to continue, uh I know stop signs at some point. First, the lights going to be removed at Park Avenue Walnut, I've got that, that is a top priority, because people tell me. Other than painting the stop signs, they look at the stop light instead of looking at the, 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 the stop sign that flashes. Look at it, LEDs that they can't see.
Yeah.
Uh that light will be removed, uh stop sign at Locust and Third Street. And changing that parking pattern, the problem, changing the parking patterns, you need to paint the, paint the pavement and. I'm going to, we will do our best to at least temporarily get that and then work down the Sycamore at some point. Third and, or yeah, Third and Locust, you really can't see, and actually I received a letter today about a, a woman who was an accident there. But I believe the driver was coming from Wendy's and hit her, so it wasn't, they weren't coming, they were, they were headed eastbound, instead of westbound. And once again, just because you put stop signs up, don't mean people are going to stop. So we will, we will do our duty and put that up. I heard today at lunch that I'm king of the four-way stops and I said, no, actually, we did a three-way stop in Park Avenue Walnut Street. I gotta be known for something, so.
And the left turn sign.
Yeah. It's ordered.
Something bigger.
We will, we're gonna do spotlights on it. That's bad down around it. Can I ask that? Neon roping around the.
Yeah. On the park and Walnut, is it possible we get? Three-way stop?
Yeah.
Signs that say three-way stop, because people sit there, because they, when they're on park, they sit there because they think the people. Yeah.
Still sit there just.
I do too. I still look. I did have someone thank me for putting that up there, but Chad's close to, I'm not gonna name names publicly. Someone said, thank you, we've lived here, it's hard to get out of here sometimes. Well, that's why I put that there, is so the buses are through there a lot easier and.
I don't mind it.
Slows it down. Yeah, no, I can't. About three way. No, I can't have a three-way.
And I did turn left there by the old central school. I forgot that sign was up there.
I think we're getting twenty-four by thirty-six. I think if it drags across the roof of people's cars, they'll know not to turn maybe or something's going on at least.
We've pretty much covered everything. Um, one thing I did want to let you guys know about is worth. From a project standpoint. If you recall, uh, it's been a year and a half ago, we got, received eighty-four seven hundred. Eighty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars from kind of some leftover money at the CBD G grant program. Uh, that was your most of the money went to West IPF. Um, we originally was going to use that money on the street lights downtown. Until we found out that that was going to be a drop in the bucket for what we would need.
It was for the poles.
Yeah, it wouldn't even cover all the poles on the lights. So mine's kind of in setting there. We don't want, we'll lose it in August. So if you recall, two years ago, the commissioners ran a mobility path down Sixth Street. From the Meadows to Plum Street that runs along our cemetery. So we had engineering associates when, give us a, a two-phase price on. Running a mobility path on the cross from Wiley's, which would be the south side of Brown's Lane. Cross on the Wiley side of the tracks and run a sidewalk down Brown's Lane. Phase one, going to Covington, phase two, going clear around the turn and clear to the main entrance of yours. That engineering price was roughly three hundred thousand, this shy of it. Or installed with engineering. Phase one now could get us to the access road into the back of yours. Or basically exactly what the grant's for and we will do the engineering out of the, uh, some other money that, uh. Street money, but money that we did not spend last year. We always try to make a little carryover there for automatic expenditures, but we made a lot of money, cause yeah, Sherry does a great job with that. When we do our street payment each year. So rather than go all the way past Covington to where the money would stop. Because Covington has an access point out of the rear corner into viewers. We're trying to get right now to where we could run that path right down the side. Of it works, you know, where the grass strip is and get all the way to that backside of that parking lot.
Yeah, the rear entrance to viewers.
And if you ever watch down there, the foot traffic and the, what you call the electric wheelchair. What they end up doing generally is crossing the grain companies property with all the semis and everything. And I know it worries them, but you know, somebody would get hit. So, uh, I talked to Rudy today, what we was doing, they were tickled to death. That, uh, the sidewalk would basically be in front of the daycare and, and cross the, uh. MBAC lot, cross our lot, take a right turn there and get along to that access road, which is far safer. Out on Brown's line, obviously. So the money is there. It all works out. We have to move fairly rapidly because the project would need to be completed by, uh, August. Which as far as something real difficult about it, other port sidewalk. And the la- last hurdle we have to jump is just that the state line has to switch projects. And we feel pretty confident that they're going to allow us to do that. So we already got the, um, letter. Sherry sent a letter today that we have the finances to cover it. So yeah, he's working on that project and we're working with John Cleveland's office. So I think that'll make a nice mobility area for that low income area. Both the Meadows and, uh. Commons, it's down there past the cemetery and then all of, uh. South Sixth Street area, there's a lot of people still walking stuff down there. I think we can get a home run with some money that is just kind of setting out there and make a difference for. I know all those people live right in the city, but it's a good collaboration with us and county, so.
That's what I was just gonna say to add, just for clarification, that's not grant dollars coming through us. It's through the county C D B G program. We will just pay, I certified that we would have, I think it was seventeen thousand eight. Eight hundred and thirty-five dollars that we would have available for our local match on it, so.
That match will cover engineering and then engineers to watch the project, clubs going on. So phase one actually gets us to where. We really wanted to be was get the, those folks off of Brown's lane as much as we can.
Cause we've talked about sidewalks up and down Second Street for a long time.
I would like to get to Dollar General, swear. We could get all the way up to Dollar General. But that gets them to a place that they can get their groceries.
All right, I'll have to ask a question. Well, you know, MBHC is a, a big project that we're building, so how does that fit in?
Well, actually I was talking about that today, like depending on how the, uh. Enter, I know the entrance is gonna come in off Second Street. And if we can get a little wider, we can actually probably MBHC, the city, like everyone can benefit from maybe. I'm gonna talk to whoever's heading up the project with MBHC, but to kind of add that. Because that sidewalk's actually gonna go right down and where the new MBHC facility is going to be built. And then the drive, if we can use that drive, then we can kind of add. We'll connect down to there and then that drive and I think it'll work, it'll be good for, for everyone. If we can add that, I mean, just right there. So I'm gonna talk and. Talk today and I'll just go straight to the top, tell them we need a sidewalk. So that's kind of, uh, we were looking at it today, but that's kind of how it's gonna, how it's gonna fit in hopefully. Cause it'll benefit everyone.
As you get on past public works, then it's just the complete backside of yours, concrete. Yeah, if they would let us just put some lines in there four foot wide, some slashes.
Right, cause there's not a lot of traffic or them back behind there. So, and we can use that basically for that path to connect to, back to where you guys are going to be the drive and then come out. So it'll be good.
Like, um, let's see, uh, ability managers and Valerie, uh.
No, uh, Tracy.
So I could put a letter of support with that too. And then we, as you notice, the, the potholes are becoming an issue after all the rain and things. And so we're out, getting out of Coleman, just as soon as we get the drive out.
Anything else?
I always like.
First of all, I'd like to welcome you aboard. Excited to have you, so. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Mark Schrock. Roger, I think I know everybody in here. Are they that bad? I've been with Sheriff's Office for seventeen years, twelve on the road, the last five at school. Looking forward to getting started. All work good together.
Yeah.
Looking forward to having you.
Got a lot of questions made?
I think, um, you know, I think just through our meetings and things, I, I just think we want someone that's, you know. If we have our ordinances, try to enforce our ordinances and let the mayor know what's going on.
We make them and we're enforcing them.
I think it's pretty much what we're after. Forward to, your, your official first base tomorrow? Thanks for coming tonight. Had to have mental health check before tomorrow. Tom, did you have a meeting last week?
I did, yes. Um, we went over a lot of stuff that, um, actually had been in the works previously. There was not a whole lot of new stuff that caused a non-disclosure that, uh, I can bring forth at this meeting. But, uh, she is, um, she's busy. She's missing some office help and she's, uh, got a lot going on.
Welcome to the working world.
Yeah. Any word on the theater or the plastics business?
Well, um, she had identified a couple of buildings for, uh, the plastic business. One in town, one out of town. So I think, uh, it's kind of up to him. He wants to be in town. And I kind of forget which meeting she said, but she is, she has us on her calendar to come and report at a, at a committee meeting.
That's it.
I'm sorry, but that's it.
I just sent you that email. Does anybody else have anything? Bob, you on there? You have anything for us?
No, not much. There's questions. I just wanted to be available in case something came up.
Oh, I think we're all good here. If not, I think we can adjourn this meeting. Glenn?
Uh, yeah, I don't know. Who knows anything, but this is gonna. It's gonna be my final meeting. Just, I, I can't do it anymore. And, um, we're, you got a replacement very quickly and it's been a pleasure serving for everybody.
Well, it's been good.
Thanks for all you've done for the city, Glenn. Well, miss not settling aside here.
He said he wouldn't miss that night.
I think, um, Glenn will officially do it when we do communications and the council meeting. Mark, you have your, um, state city on the thirteenth. But back to Glenn, Glenn, I just know, you know, my short time here. I know, but like I told you today, I know you love doing this. It's a difficult decision. But, you know, I think for you and for your health wise and for things that you told me today. I think it's why I hope you get healthier sooner. I'm gonna miss you because, and I know it hurts you because of the time and dedication is. As much as you love doing this. So, and I, I appreciate you as well. When I was appointed. You were able to meet with me and talk and discuss some things and I appreciate that. I always appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? If not, we'll adjourn and I'll meet you guys in council in about fifty minutes. I hear the slot machines.
Yeah, so regularly scheduled to the Chalk City Council meeting. Please call the roll.
Andrew here, Barcroft.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Michler.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Need a motion to excuse Council Gross. I'll show you. Call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Michler.
Here.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
We stand for the pledge, may stand for the dedication. Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the people of our land, for it stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Definitely part of being with us tonight as we conduct our council business. Thoughts and prayers are with everyone in our city. Watch over some of those guys make good decisions for the city. Thank you. Amen. Council, your email to minutes from the January ninth meeting. Any questions or comments?
Make motion we approve the minutes.
Call the roll please.
Andrew.
Yes.
Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Michler.
Yeah.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Public input, feel anybody here public input tonight? Okay, we have an addition to the agenda. For tonight, uh ordinance five twenty-three trash contract.
I'll make the motion that we add that to the ninth agenda.
Call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft. Johnson.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Okay, well, just by doing that. And state maybe there's none. Mayor, you have anything to add for the meeting?
Uh, don't really. I just want to say thanks uh for Glenn Michler's ten years of service to city council. It is a thankless job and appreciate what he's done for the residents of the of the city.
Actually, I mean, hey?
Nothing more from the committee other than we will be out uh filling pot holes this week as weather it takes uh. Couple around, so just the comments. I'm like driving, not like ever the mayor's top gun. Glenn, I have to say every side of it for almost six years and and his knowledge and experience with me when I first started the job, especially around the ordinance system. I really appreciate that, so wish him all the best luck in the news forums.
Oh, there, Sheriff, you have anything to add?
Nothing. Do you think we want to share any questions?
Sheriff's report.
Nothing to add unless case you have questions.
I don't think you're getting ready to ask or something.
Good. Any any progress on the newly formed driveway and dentistry? We'll get you an update on that this week.
Thank you. Property code, welcome to Mark again. Um the council's looking forward to working with you. Sure, the sheriff's not very happy about losing you. Um, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Dave, you have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Rusty, you have anything from the fire department?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, you'll give me a date on.
I will.
Chatting about.
Yeah.
Data, okay? We'll go into legislation. I'll ask the clerk to give the first reading of ordinance four twenty-three.
Ordinance vacating one flooded alley being zero point four three acres submitted in the city of Kachak in Chalk County, Ohio.
Heard the first reading of ordinance four twenty-three and questions or comments? Four twenty-three will run its course. I'll ask the clerk to give first reading of ordinance five twenty-three.
In order to establish in trash rate and authorizing the service director to sign contract, he signs up contract extension with Kimball Company.
Heard the first read of ordinance five twenty-three, questions or comments? Ordinance five twenty-three will run its course. We have no other legislation to discuss. This is quiet as chat been for a year from last year, so um the old business. The new business, as communications, asking when uh, Michler? Your floor, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for the pitch.
You know, I'll revisit my thoughts of committee and I'm sure I speak with council as I know that you helped me out. I was appointed and uh greatly appreciate it. You know, it's hard to give up something you love to do and um. Good luck in the future. I know you've got some things coming up here that you're going to cut through and I'll be thinking about you.
Thank you.
Any else?
I'd like to welcome Mark also. And thank Glenn for his numerous years on city council. He's been very helpful over the years.
Okay, Clark, when is the date and time of our next meeting? Yes, February thirteenth, I believe the mayor will give us date of the city.
I think Glenn ought to make the motion to adjourn to the.
Yes. Glenn, would you like to make the motion to adjourn the meeting tonight, please?
I would. You're a great question.
Motion by Mr. Glenn.
I'll say.
Perk, please call the roll.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner's next.